Okay.
Good evening. Now that we have a forum, we'll have a call to order. Larry Tuning here. Alana Courtney.
Here.
Bill Golds with us here. Beth Justin.
Here.
Robbie Wilson.
Here.
Having a forum, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right. Do I have a? Do I have to, uh, public, uh, close meeting, go out to amend the agenda to include that?
At times.
Okay, all right.
Item one.
All right. But it doesn't say specifically what it is.
That's in the motion.
That's correct. All right. So do I have a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as?
I may.
Do I have a second? All favor?
I.
I. Any opposed?
General.
Yeah.
No, you don't.
Would they deal with?
You're sitting left here.
I think, no, that's just, uh, I don't have the information.
Oh, okay.
I had it in the shop and I forgot it.
All right. Um.
I don't need this, I need.
I first up, public comment. Sarah Jane Wyatt.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
For sure. Can y'all hear me? Um, hi, members of council, I'm Sarah Jane Wyatt and this is Amy Denny. And we are here tonight representing Urbana, Main Street. Megan Hall could not be here, so I said that I would, um, step in and speak for us tonight. But we have had a lot going on and, um, Megan, and, uh, this is beautiful sheet for y'all to show you what we have been up to. So I'm just coming, um, to give you a little overview. As you know, for the past two years, we've done the holiday home tour, which has been quite successful. And last year we had, um, almost four hundred people attend. We had about three hundred the first year. And, um, then we also have gotten our five oh one C three. I think most of you know that we had a firm in Richmond, Troutman, Pepper, help us with that. We had gotten a, um, community vitality grant through the Virginia Main Street program who would help us with that. But this law firm, um, my husband and I are good friends with one of the partners, has ties with A-Lot Country Day. And he stepped in and actually we have four lawyers with their tax team in Atlanta that have contributed over fifty thousand dollars worth of, um, pro bono legal service to us.
Cool.
So we have, um, our five oh one C three, we're going, we're, um, registering with the S E C, the Department of Agriculture, which I don't know why, but nonprofits have to register there. We have new bylaws and articles of incorporation. We did take over the five oh one C three of Urbana beautification, which Louis Hall helped just make it go beautifully. So we just really appreciate all of his work. And, yes, and we also are a member of the National American Main Street. Um, we've become members of that as well. Costs a hundred and fifty dollars a year, so it's money pretty well spent. And I just want to make the point that being a member of Main Street does not cost anything. There are no dues, there's nothing. We get help through our representative Kyle Meyer, who gives his expertise. And then we, and I'll get to this in a minute, then we, by being members, have ability to apply for funding of, at different levels. Um, and speaking of that, so two years ago, we got a community vitality grant to do strategic planning, which we did at the beginning of March, for a weekend of March first and second. So roughly done. And, um, that work is complete. And when Megan is back, we will present that strategic plan to you. But that was incredible. And, um, Sherrell, and did, um, yes, worked with us and it was just very productive. And we did a great job. We also have been working on our branding, which was also funded by the community vitality grant. An example of that that you see here, we're still working through that. But I don't know if you can see it, the symbol that we are thinking about using is the scallop shell, the fossil that is found on the shores of Urbana so much. And what, as Megan and I were on the train going to Philadelphia to the national conference, she was showing me that that's what she was working on. And she, it's up at the top of the page. And she wasn't sure about it. And I said, well, Megan, you know, that encompasses all of Urbana's history. Um, and it's like a vessel that holds it all. Um, my cousin was here a few years ago and he is a geologist. And we took him to where some of those shells are. And he looked at me and he realized these shells are older than the Grand Canyon. I mean, it's just really amazing. And we're, so we think that's a pretty cool symbol for our group. And so today I submitted a grant that Larry, I talked with him about, to, um, have wayfinding signs throughout town. Um, as you know, when you come here, especially from this direction, if you're here for the first time, where is the waterfront? Where is the museum? And, and those sorts of things. So we've, um, I've worked all week on a grant, another community vitality grant to Main Street for fifteen thousand dollars to pay for wayfinding signs throughout town. And, um, I've been working with Trent Funkhouser, who has experience in this. And we will design a plan of where they best should go. And he, um, says that he'll help us with VDOT and anything that may be necessary. But I know that when Mary applied for this in the past, um, the lot that Phil Hype had, they had already agreed to help us sign there. And that's one of the main places we need to have that. But Kyle Meyer, our representative, has suggested we make sure we also find some transient voters so they know to come to our commercial district. And we will be tracking that with an intercept, um, survey to see how people are interacting with the signs before and after, and just to improve visitor engagement as they come. So Megan and I attended the Main Street America Conference in Philadelphia last, beginning of this month. And it was incredible. Um, three or four days of just, there were people from all over the country. Every state was represented. Um, Josh Shapiro was there. It was, it was, was great. And then finally, what we're also working on, that's Amy, this is her project, is a mural project that will go where Small Town Burger is, along the A B C building on that wall. And it will be representational of all of Urbana's history, but especially Deborah Pratt. And I met someone in Philadelphia who had met Deborah Pratt in Boston at a conference. I mean, she, she stinks. And it was, it was really incredible. So through our holiday home tour, we have raised, um, pretty decent money. And we are able to, I think that Amy and Mary came to you two years ago to ask for funding for part-time persons to help with grant writing. I'm now the one doing all of that, which is fine. Um, and tourism and just administration of the grants and open the overall Main Street program. And we understand the town doesn't have thirty thousand extra dollars for that.
That's what we have.
But we have written enough money that we can contribute fifteen thousand dollars a year towards that salary. And we, um, the home tour has been more successful each year. We will be doing it again and we hope to, to raise even more this year. And we're also planning a second special event in the frame. The special events and even grants won't pay for a staff person. And, and you need to have a sustainable, um, uh, stream of funding to do this. So we are asking for five thousand dollars out of the budget to help go towards this, which will help us so much as we're going for grants to say, the town is behind us. And, um, and then we, this will all build on each other. Because the more that people we bring here, the more tax dollars we have and the more successful we can be. So I just want to close and say the four pillars of America and Main Street and the Main Street organization at large is organization, marketing, economic vitality and design. And Main Street grew out of the national trust for historic preservation. And what they do is work with historic small towns all across the country. And they're expert at it. And by focusing on those four pillars, they've been very successful. And, um, I know that, um, Colonial Beach and Tappahannock and, um,
Even tiny ones like Covey.
You know, and the one, um, not, I, um, not Aquafan.
Oh, no, Prosser.
Onanca. Onan, yeah. They are all part of the Main Street program. And if you look at them and see their success, that is a great reason why.
The only thing I was gonna add, but, yeah, I mean, it is a requirement as we are a member of the National Main Street, um, program to have a staff person.
Well, to, to go forward, we are now an emerging Main Street program. We are this close to being a mobilizing Main Street program. And each level, we, fifteen thousand was the largest amount we could apply for. If we become mobilizing, we are eligible for fifty thousand dollar grants. T-Mobile has a grant for forty thousand dollars to help with funding music festivals. And, um, and there's all sorts of funding available. And the higher up you go, and then the final level, which I can't remember, like you're an official Main Street, there's up to seventy five thousand dollars a year that you can get. So we are this close to being mobilizing groups, getting our nonprofit status. So we really hope that you can help us. And then we can talk more with the town and do all these projects that, or some of them, that everybody wants to do. Do y'all have any questions?
Well, this is technically public comments, so I'll let these guys respond.
Okay.
Typically it would be three minutes. We shouldn't put you on, we shouldn't put you on the agenda.
And she told me today I'd be talking. Sorry.
So I have a question. So, um, this staff will be working part-time, I assume, okay, part-time, like working on signing grants and ways to get the name of the town out there and?
Yes, and Megan is already doing that through our social media and working with Whitney. Um, yeah. So that will be that. And we have actually two places where we could possibly have a tourism office, um, free. Um, so that's where the person would work from.
Yeah. But she would also be working on branding and social media. I mean, it's tourism and tourism, so it encompasses a lot of things.
The administration of the grants. Because once you get the money, you know, they're reporting that Ted. Thank you Ted for helping us so much. And, um, and we've been working with one grant that we have now.
Thank you all so much.
Okay. Thank you, good job.
Thanks for what you do.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
I'm back.
We missed you.
What do you mail three twenty rap I got me? Number one, I don't believe the word kink. We have a bad problem with these manhole covers about. Three little kids come down the street, they're named three little scooters. Two of them hit the ground because they hit the manhole cover. We can go to the moon, but we can't pass the dang old hole. Something's wrong. I don't know who's ahead of it. I don't know, somebody that shouldn't be controlled or what's going on. But we need to talk to somebody if we gotta go to Franklin. Get a whole muscle load just go to Franklin. But something's gotta be done. This is terrible. We got a historic town. We still got a hole like horses buggies, baby, years ago. At least we can do something.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy.
I could be one of, just front of that, give it up there real quick.
Yeah, um, council's gonna advise that, um, and apologies to our, yeah, H R S D basically told VDOT that it wasn't their issue, that they weren't moved in at the time that the painting got done. However, they would supply the lifter rings for VDOT installed and level things out. Subsequently, reviewing some project plans, those project plans indicated that those were going to be installed anyway by H R S D. So we may have, we may have two solutions to this problem. So we may get lifter rings installed from H R S D and leave at night, like have a big stack of lifter rings sitting in the backyard. Or use them all the time, something like that. Now, when will it happen? Um.
Maybe it's for Mac to do for Phillips.
Maybe, this might be a surprise to him, but, um, the, the date's not been given, it's Labor Day.
Yes. We've been working with.
Oh, no.
VDOT quite a bit on this. And we actually had the meetings.
Actually, if you're gonna ask people this, please go to my.
I was just gonna say, you can maybe fill it in when you, because you're coming up soon. Well, you might as well wait and you can fill that in at the same time. Because you're on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. There's your answer, Mr. Mayor. So.
There is no answer. That's your answer.
Yeah. Like everything else, it's in the works.
It's not getting fixed straight, so it works.
All right.
It's gonna work for ten years.
Right now, um, we move on to independence, independent state celebration presentation. You wanna kick that up? And we got Evan Bell, Evan Bell on the, uh, screen as the director.
So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. So this particular item, I think a lot of folks are familiar with the background issue of our fireworks, fireworks being canceled because of, um, insurance issues and trying to fill in that, uh, that event with some different events over several days and the heat just do its thing. Um, the new event, the drone show, a drone show, is being contemplated. And Evan Bell with Air Loom Incorporated will present remotely his company's product. And he's already presented to myself, the treasurer, and to, um, council member justice. Um, and after that, we received a, uh, proposed agreement. And that has been sent to the town's attorney for review. Um, what we already have commitments for on July the fifth, Saturday, July the fifth, not the fourth, but Saturday, July the fifth, is a military band that will perform from six to eight at no cost, except for the feeding of the band members. Um, the drone show would take place at approximately nine P M. But it could be delayed due to weather. And I think Mr. Bell will probably talk about some of those copies. Uh, the fiscal impact for the drone show is eighteen thousand dollars. Um, uh, and it'd be more depending on where we go with the drone shows. I'll talk about that in just a moment. Uh, if we had to do road closures and security and that type of thing. The current budget calls for fifteen thousand dollars for fireworks. Uh, staff recommendations, if council wants to pursue this option, there are two items that have to be determined. First is the location. Um, in many respects, the marinas preferred, that is, air wings preferred, uh, viewing site. But their launch site would have to be from Rosegill, just like the fireworks would. Um, and we have, Mr. Bell and I have, have talked to the owners of, of Oyster Scale and they're very, very supportive of this. Let me be very crystal clear. They, they miss not having the fireworks. Um, they wish that they could have worked things out last year, you know, last, last year. But they're very supportive of this idea. It comes down to what will their insurance company say? Which gets us to the next point, which is the insurance. Now, um, if, if the insurance company can work out, and we can go to Rosegill, we can go to the marina. The marina would accommodate the van, the marina would accommodate, um, some food vendor trucks and that sort of thing. Um, if we can't do the marina, because we can't get the launch site at Rosegill, I've already spoken to, um, the Oyster Festival staff and have sent them, um, communication that the launch site could be on their property adjacent to Tabor Park. Right? You know, Tabor Park, we wouldn't have to close streets, we'd still have to have some security. But obviously it would take care of food vendors and, um, and that sort of thing. So basically what staff, the, the, what staff is asking for the council to consider this evening after the presentation is authorize us to enter into a service agreement with Air Loom for drone show July fifth at approximately nine P M, eighteen thousand dollars after a launch site has been secured. If we can't secure a launch site, again, Tabor Park, Oyster Festival, we have that in our pocket, but it's not the preferred site. If we can get the preferred site, we'll get the preferred site and move forward now. Uh, I'll be happy to take any questions at this time, but obviously Mr. Bell is the subject matter expert here. So there are no questions. But I'd like to open it up to Mr. Bell.
He might answer.
Oh, okay. He'll tell you everything he needs to know about you.
Well, thank you, Ted. I really appreciate that. And, um, Beth, also good to see you as well, folks. I can't really see everybody in the room, but I can see the main panel. I don't know how many people I'm talking in front of. I wish I could have joined you all tonight, but I was, uh, you know, very busy with work today and I wouldn't have made it on time. And probably a good thing, I'm a little under the weather, so I didn't wanna get anybody else sick while I'm there. But, um, you know, I don't know how much time I have to talk. So, you know, you guys, uh, please feel free to cut me off. I'm just gonna go over, uh, what I did with Ted and Beth and Michelle on our first call and, uh, just kinda give you the guys the ins and outs of, you know, how we operate and what we do. So like I said, please feel free to cut me off if you have any questions. Um, so yes, we're airloom drone shows. We're based out of, uh, Crowe's A, right outside of Charlottesville. And we are the only, uh, Virginia drone light show company that's around right now. Uh, we've been in business ever since June of last year. And, uh, we've been doing everything from wineries and football games to, uh, Boars Head Resort. That was one of our, uh, most successful events. We did the, uh, Trail of Lights that they have up there, their Winter Wander, actually it's called. And that's for the Christmas time. And, uh, we did seven shows for them and we were, uh, we had great results every single day. Um, our, our best night was actually an off-peak day on a Tuesday. Uh, Boars Head Resort was, you know, anticipating selling about a thousand tickets and we were able to help them surpass twenty-five hundred. So, you know, uh, drone light shows are really up and coming. They're very exciting and, you know, they of course, uh, drive a lot of foot traffic to, you know, whatever event we have them at a time. Within that, you know, we do, uh, we do shows anywhere from one hundred drones all the way up to fifteen hundred drones. Um, what we had talked about initially was doing a two hundred drone show. And, uh, we were gonna do a standard show. Um, the difference in, um, you know, kind of a standard show and a custom show is, you know, uh, once we do come to, if, if we do, you know, kinda surpass this step right here, once we, um, you know, kinda start designing the show, our, we have about, um, we have about two hundred animations within our library that apply to you guys. So, you know, we would be selecting a bunch of the animations from our, uh, standard library, which we have a great selection of. You know, we have everything from fireworks to, you know, a flag unfolding to, um, you know, to helicopters in the sky, really anywhere your, your mind can take you, we can kinda create that animation in the sky. From that, you know, we have three custom animations that you guys would be able to, um, you know, be able to develop. And that could be anything from, you know, possibly the town's logo to seeing, um, you know, Urbana written in the sky and, you know, just really anything you can think of. Um, and, you know, like Ted had said, we had, we were, uh, talking about doing the show over at Rosegill. Um, that is our main base of operations where we're gonna be, you know, staging the drones and flying them from. That is really ideal, uh, compared to Tabor Park, because, you know, Tabor Park is, you know, from what I've seen, um, from an aerial view, it's much smaller. Uh, you know, when you have two hundred drones, you're gonna have to, you, you, you're gonna need a larger footprint than what Tabor Park really has. We can make Tabor Park work. It's just gonna take a lot more, uh, coordination on our part. Um, but like I said, ideally, we'd be operating from Rosegill. We'd be putting, uh, the drones up kind of right over the bank and a little bit over the water on the Rosegill side. So, you know, they're, they'll be able to have boats come into the, um, into the channel right there and watch from afar. However, we will need to, uh, coordinate with, um, uh, the local authorities to, you know, kind of stop any boats coming from within, uh, coming in a safety perimeter that we have to establish. Um, you know, that safety perimeter will not take up the whole channel, but, you know, it will, um, you know, block off that portion closest to Rosegill. Um, that will also, you know, give us a beautiful landscape to work with, you know, looking out over the water and everybody being able to see it from the marina will actually give it a, uh, you know, much better show than, um, you know, having people come into the land and, um, you know, just look at it in a, in a different sort of way. And, you know, obviously it, it's gonna be a much better show if you're gonna be, um, watching it from your boat as well. Um, for our operations wise, you know, we, uh, we show up probably about four hours before the show and we're gone typically about an hour after the show. So all in all, we're, we're there about maybe five to six hours. And, um, and yeah, our show duration is about fifteen minutes, uh, for, for this two hundred drone light show. Um, I know Ted had mentioned that we had, um, you know, the eighteen thousand dollar pricing on this two hundred drone show. And I know that is a little bit more than what your fireworks show would cost. However, the thing about the fireworks and the drone shows, how I like to compare them is, you know, a fireworks show is very comparable to a one hundred drone show. So, you know, once you kinda surpass that one hundred drones and you start working into two hundred and three hundred, that's when you really start creating a, you know, very memorable and shareable event that's, you know, gonna evoke a lot of emotions and have people really looking forward to next year. So, you know, what we're really planning on is putting on an excellent show for you guys that, uh, really makes up for not having anything last year. And, you know, has people looking forward to next year and, you know, hopefully a larger show as well. Do you guys have any, um, are there any initial questions or remarks about our shows? Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any kind of videos that, I mean, I'm a little bit older. I'm having a hard time visualizing this whole thing. Is there any kind of a video or link that, that you have that you can show us what it might look like?
Yes, um, I can show you, you know, what I'd like to do first is I'll show you guys, um, I'll share my screen and show you guys some of the animations that we have within our stock library, which you, you guys will be selecting from. And then I'll, I'll, I'll show you the difference between the one hundred anime, uh, one hundred drones and the two hundred drones. Like I said, a fireworks show is very comparable to a one hundred drone show. Um, if you haven't seen a drone show before, it is extremely immersive. So, you know, the videos and the animations that I show you on the computer won't do it justice, but I, I promise you can take my word for it. Um, let me.
Before you pull, where's the website that we could, what, what, is it under airloom for the website? That you can see demo?
Yes, sir. Uh, we don't, we actually don't have any videos on our, uh, website, but, you know, we do on our Instagram. Um, you can see things from Boars Head Resort and, uh, you know, some different shows that we've done at, you know, football games, at some wineries, you know, things of that sort. But I can also, um, you know, I'll also pull up a video, bear with me, and, um, it will be of, it'll be of a, uh, show that we did, um, at Swanonoa, if you guys are familiar with that. It's, it's in Afton. And, um, Afton is kinda, uh, right outside Charlottesville. It's at the, it's at the top of the mountains out here and it's absolutely beautiful. Um, you know, first, let me share, I'll share that video with you and then I'll show you guys some of the, uh, some of the animations that we have available.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are you folks able to see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna hit play. And just so you guys know, this is of a, this is kind of like a, um, a promotional video. So there's gonna be, you know, some quick movements with the, uh, with the, um, camera. And this is also a one hundred drone show. So you guys would have, you know, double the amount in the sky. So that is one that we have. I hope I didn't blow you guys away with that music over here.
We didn't hear any music.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, the music is a huge element to it. So, um, I will, uh, I'll have to keep that in mind for next time. I apologize that you guys didn't hear anything. Um, but, you know, the, the music is a huge element to it and that's something that we would definitely tie into your show as well, you know. So, um, and I know that you guys can still see my screen right now, I apologize. But, um, you know, when you, when you, uh, talk about the musical element, you know, we sit down with you guys in the designing phase and we come up with a few great songs that really tie into this show and, you know, really kinda get across the message that you guys are kinda wanting for this, uh, for this potential show. I know it's gonna be a, um, you know, kind of a fourth, uh, July fourth theme. So, you know, any kind of, I, I guess patriotic music or whatever you guys might be searching for would be wonderful for that. Um, but. I'm sorry?
We have to provide the music and the sound system, the projector.
No, we, uh, we provide all of that. Um, you know, if you guys have a P A system that we can utilize, that'd be wonderful. Uh, however, if you guys don't, then, you know, we bring our own speakers. Uh, we basically take everything out of your hands and you, you guys just tell us, you know, um, when to arrive, really. And, you know, we just, uh, we make the magic happen from there. And so we, uh, we, we provide all the music, we provide the sound, really everything. But, you know, if you guys have a P A system that is, you know, better than our speakers and we'd like to utilize that, of course. Um, but.
The, um, the motif, the design. We do, we do. We got some great ones.
Yeah, so we uh, we sit down with you and so just a little bit more about us. Um I am the sales manager and marketing for Heirloom and then our founder is also the designer. So he would be the one sitting down with you guys and coming up with these, you know, special animations that you see right here. And what you do see right here is part of our stock library that I was talking about. These are the two hundred drones. I'm gonna flip over real quick and I'll show you the one hundred drone animations, just so you can kind of see the, to me, the stark difference. So these are the one hundred drone animations. And um. There, there's a lot of movement going on right now, but um, I will show you guys a great one that I really like to show people because I'm a big golfer. If you guys can remember this golf ball and driver for me, you can really note from the golf ball, all the, all of the dimples or drones that you see right here. As well as the shaft and you know, the T, everything that's involved. If you kind of remember this, you know, uh very uh simple animation. Once I switch it over to two hundred. And you know, show you that golf ball and driver again, as you can see, I think you can kind of picture what I'm talking about as. Really, you know, taking it to the next level with two hundred or three hundred drones and creating something memorable because. There's so much more that you can create by utilizing two hundred drones. I mean, the golf ball looks three D. Uh the it, the driver head is almost connected and you know, just uh, just more definition to the T, to the shaft of the driver. Um and just a lot more capabilities that you have with two hundred drones. I'll show you guys some more that we have in here as well. This is still of the two hundred drones. And uh, this is within our stock library, like I was saying. So. You know, within that standard show that we, that I talked about with uh Ted and Beth and Michelle. Um this would, this is kind of the route that we were pursuing. So we would be selecting the majority of the animations uh from. Uh from this library and then the other three animations would be custom. So that's where we would create something very special for Urbana that really applied to you guys. But I'll just scroll through here, you know, uh kind of slowly for a minute and you know, just so you guys can see all of the, you know, options that are available and. You know, it, there's just a wide array of things and even a lot of stuff that's. That's great, that can be really good fillers. Um you know, kind of like geometric shapes. If you guys want to use this dancing caddy shack, that would be amazing. I've been looking for an excuse to put that in the show. I love that movie. Um but as as you see right here, this American flag, you know, that's that's part of our, you know, stock library. So that would be one that we would definitely throw into the show, I would think. And then, you know, we have some great, you know, uh military and um. Different things available.
Bike fill the screen? Just out of curiosity.
I'm sorry?
Can you make the flag fill the screen?
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course. In these animations, they can last anywhere from uh about forty-five seconds to a minute and fifteen seconds. So uh, the more drones you have, typically the, a little bit longer, they stay in formation. Just because it takes them a little bit longer getting to the next formation since there's so many.
How long is the show?
Fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, yeah, you look like you have a lot of fun um nautical ones.
What's that?
You look like you have a lot of cool nautical ones, like sailboats, stinging nettles.
We, we do have a, I think we had a sailboat at the very beginning. Here's a sailboat we have right here. Being very cool, I'll uh make that large screen as well. So yeah, we do have, you know, quite a bit of nautical. I think that we even um. This maybe even discussed this blue heron. I'm not, I'm not sure if we did. I thought we did though, but this one, I can vouch for this one. This one's um, I've I've actually only seen this in uh one hundred drones. We did this for. We did this for Boris Head Resort and it is absolutely beautiful in the sky. The the uh blues and oranges complementary colors are just wonderful in the night sky and really shine. So to talk a little bit more about that, we also have um some of the most accurate and brightest drones on the market. So even in a well-lit night sky, you're gonna see, you're gonna be able to pick out our formations very easily. So if you guys have ever. Or if anybody else has ever seen a drone show through, you know, Disney World or, you know, seen it on America's Got Talent, those are the types of drones that we're working with.
I think that's our college, maybe, because they're RGB. Anything?
Uh what what was that about RGB?
How many different colors can the drones have?
I mean, really just about any color on that spectrum that you can think of. I mean, there are gonna be some that, you know, obviously can't work too well, like a deep purple. You know, those can work, but you know, if you think about the night sky, it would kind of blend in. So um, we can create just about any color that you can think of.
And what kind of feeling and weather do you need?
Gr- that's a great question. Um and while I'm answering that, here's like some of these geometric forms through here. Some are fireworks and you know, just different things like that that are absolutely great fillers and very awing once you see them. So you know, people aren't really thinking, well, what is that shape supposed to be? It's just really, you know, immersive to where you're not even thinking about it too much. But you know, getting back to that question, uh we can operate really um, until the weather is uh. You know, we we have to operate with about a thousand foot cloud base and about, and three miles of ice um, of linear sight. So you know, just in case any pilots are happen to be coming through the area, they'll, um, you know, we obviously put a. Um a notice to all airmen out there the day prior. So all pilots are aware of when and where we're operating. But you know, just for um, safety sake, we need a uh, you know, three miles of vision as well as a thousand foot cloud base. Apart from, you know, those little fine things, uh stuff that's probably more pragmatic is um, you know, rain. And wind, uh wind, we can operate in anything less than twenty-six miles an hour. If it, you know, surpasses that, then you know, that's gonna be blowing our drones all over the sky and possibly uh falling out of the sky, hopefully not. But you know, we just, we don't put the drones up in any sort of windy weather like that. And if it's raining, you know, we uh, we don't fly in rain either. However, you know, we will stick around as long as you guys would like until we can find a flyable window. Um apologies, I stopped scrolling. Uh here's a catamaran, that'd be kind of cool. Um so you know, we'll stick around for as long as you guys would like to be able to put the show on for that date. However, you know, if that does not work for you guys, then you know, we can always, we have a one hundred eighty day rescheduling clause. That, you know, anytime within that hundred eighty days, we can come back out and, you know, put that same show on for you guys. And we're, we're very easy to work with. If that falls, you know, a little bit outside of that one hundred eighty days, then you know, we'll, we'll definitely oblige. And however, if you guys are just, you know, looking to get the money back, then we also provide a thirty percent refund. And then um, you know, when it comes to payments, uh payment is just fifty percent due on, you know, uh execution of the contract. And then apart from that, the other fifty percent is due two weeks before our show. So you know, we have a, we have a great selection of stuff through here. Um even getting into Christmas stuff and things here at the very end. But um, you know, a lot that is very applicable and could really, I think, fill out your show very nicely.
Right. But not as loud as fireworks for your animals. In the area.
And you can bring the dogs, you know, it's a dog friendly, they love it. So um, yeah, we're uh, we're we're actually talking with the SPCA for doing a um. For doing kind of like an animal friendly drone show this year. So it's very exciting. So uh, that is kind of uh what we had to offer, what I've gone over with, you know, the, you know, the initial crew. And you know, I'd be happy to answer any more questions. If I haven't um addressed anything, I apologize. I think I've covered everything that we had gone over in our initial conversations though.
I will be the first people to have this. Nobody else will have it. Which will really put us on the map, guys.
That's true. We only have um. You know, in this immediate area, right before that, we're only gonna have a couple of drone shows and that's gonna be here in the Glen Allen area. So um, you know, I'm gonna be talking to them and telling them about the Urbana show, hopefully. And uh, you know, just get even more folks out to Urbana on July the fifth.
You've got my vote.
And and one of the things that I think is interesting is that. The shows that were costing us the fifteen thousand dollars, we always had to schedule at odd times because. Four, five and six, three, four and five were always taken. And this would be the Saturday night of July fifth, right?
Right.
Which is per- perfect time in terms of getting people into town.
Yeah, definitely. Uh getting to miss the, all the traffic and stuff like that. But. Yeah, I I think it'll be a a a great event. Um you know, our pricing, you know, to go a little bit more on that is actually under the industry average. So um, you know, we're, we're also, you know, very close to you guys. So we don't, there's not gonna be any travel fees on top of that or any sort of accommodations. So it should be uh, pretty uh, pretty simple for you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Hope you feel better.
I appreciate that. Would you guys like me to stay on for a little bit longer and uh to, you know, field any questions if anybody thinks of anything?
You all want to proceed with the motion or?
I I think we should proceed with the motion. We good with that? I guess, well, I do have.
I can see that we don't.
It's just out of curiosity, what's the price between the one hundreds or two hundreds or three hundreds? Oh, how much more for a three hundred? Yeah, or how much less for the one?
I think correct it for mom, but we were able to do a hundred fourteen thousand?
Uh a hundred for fifteen thousand. Yes.
Yeah, it reminds me of doing, but I get the double thing.
And uh, so Ted, uh I I believe that's Ted, I I can't see, but um. Yes, the the one hundred for fifteen thousand, that was for a fully custom show. So all of the animations would have been fully customizable. Um we, I think it's, I think it was ten thousand for a standard show, if I'm correct. Please don't hold me to that, but I believe it was ten thousand. And that would be um, you know, basically what you guys are getting for eighteen thousand for two hundred drones. So you know, kind of to go a little bit more on that, guys, we have basically a custom show and a standard show. And um, the custom show is exactly how it sounds, is fully customizable. And we sit down with you, we come up with all the animations that, you know, really apply to this show or event at hand. And then the standard show is fifteen to twenty percent customizable. And then the rest of the animations come from the stock library that I just shared with you guys. So you know, three animations. And then the rest are about maybe like ten to twelve animations come from the stock library. So for a two hundred custom show would be twenty-five thousand. And then, you know, I I can always get you guys pricing. I can follow back up if you, if you all are interested in a three hundred show.
Now.
Oh, we don't have the budget for that.
And and obviously with the custom shows. It it takes, it it probably does take some skill and planning to figure out where those drones are gonna go. And that takes a lot of time to set that up.
Yes, it takes, it takes. I'm sorry.
How long does it take to do the custom?
So it takes. It takes Jason, our um, our founder and animator or designer, it takes him about six to eight hours to design each animation. So kind of like that waving flag I showed to you on there, that can uh take anywhere from six to eight, six to eight hours for design. So you know, that's, you know, why we have the increased cost, obviously.
This is gonna be twenty-five, twenty-six, but.
No, this is in the current budget.
We didn't spend. We have fifteen in the current budget for fireworks.
You're correct.
So this would be, if you go with the eighteen thousand show. It's three thousand more than what you got budget for fireworks. And again, more of a margin. In addition to security and road closures.
Do you have any idea how much that it will be, Ted?
The road closure is a hundred dollars for the permit. And we normally need, because of the size, we put our shuttle sets to come in. If they will not, the running costs are fifty dollars per hour. We need, usually need two. So you're looking at really two hours, three hours.
Not a whole lot.
Yeah, no, a hundred dollars.
Well, depends on when you want to shut the road down. So I would think you don't want a bunch of cars down there at six o'clock for the band. Then you shut the road down. I would think you want to shut the road down probably around four.
Right. Can you give me a figure?
Four to ten with the band, like two dozen things an hour or something.
Can you give me a figure so I can add it to the eighteen thousand?
A a hundred off, how many hours? Five hundred dollars. Roughly. For security and a hundred for road closure.
Not all. Yeah. And and we're good on the sound system. The reason I bring that up again is it's in the hundred five responsibilities. But we've already got a sound system done for the bands, correct? But we're good there. We won't prevent anything on that.
Well, I I think it'd be some technical coordination between a sound system that's across the creek from where the. Things are being controlled.
If you need a sound system, we, I could provide it. No charge.
You said you all can provide?
I I can provide extra to boost what you have. Um, I'm at a band, so I have a full P A.
Nice. Um, well, well, yeah, that that'd be great. Um and yeah, I I, we have about two to three speakers and, you know, we, we've set them up for. We, we didn't do it at, we didn't set up the speakers at uh Boris Head Resort, we use theirs, but you know, we've set it up for crowds of a couple, a few hundred. So um, and they put out great noise. So um, you know, if we can accompany that. What's that?
You need the power to hook into a road skill. If we have that, we can.
We wouldn't be playing the music from there. We would actually set up somebody across, you know, uh, across the little channel right there. That's kind of where, where the crowd is and you know, we would be in constant communication with them. And that's obviously our team member that we're gonna have on site. And you know, so once you guys are ready to go, you just say, hey, you know, at nine o'clock or whenever, you know, uh, we want you guys to uh take off right at that time. And so we're, we'll, we'll take it out of your hands from there and we coordinate with a guy across the channel. He presses play and we have everything synchronized.
We could boost your sound system if that's what we need. We can make it louder for you.
Yeah, that, I'll uh, I'll talk to Jason about that and you know, I can get back with you on that, Beth. But um, yeah, that that would be great if you could, um, if you could help provide that. We, I really appreciate that.
That would save us a little money.
Yeah.
Would it? Yeah, uh, I mean, we make it a louder show, but not more money.
So all in? We're we're figuring on the security.
Fifty dollars and a couple cents per hour each, nineteen thousand, hundred dollars per hour.
Thank you, Ted. So it's a nineteen, I, I'd make a motion, we vote on this. Uh, the the motion was to uh lock down the site and then move forward.
To be able to lock down the site and then be able to execute the agreement. With the agreement costing eighteen thousand, anything else is outside the.
Correct.
But you want. Understand that we'll be spending more than eighteen thousand.
Yes. Okay. We have the motion there, Robbie? Make the motion. I have to read the motion.
Read it.
Uh, I'm moved to authorize the staff to enter into the service agreement with Heirloom for drone show in June, July, July, one twenty-five and nine P M. Their cost for eighteen thousand dollars provided a launch site and event.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
It's not incredibly overbused.
No, it's not. It's, it's not, I, again, I've worked on the fireworks barge thing. I thought we got close. That honestly, a barge that we got lucky is gonna cost the price of the fireworks over again on top of the, absolutely. This is pretty neat.
This is gonna be new and it's gonna be, it's gonna draw new people to us, more people than last year. And so we don't lose our footing. And the Fourth of July experience in Urbana. I think it's a great thing.
And just remember us when you get big.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you know.
But that.
What was that?
I said, remember us when you get big.
I'll do that. I will, I'll definitely keep you guys in mind, no doubt about that, um, well, that's great and I will definitely pass along the words to all these Richmond folks down here and, you know. Drive even more foot traffic out to the little town of Urbana.
Yeah. Can you lock this in for two years at this price?
Ah, I wish I could, I wish I could, um, but. We can always talk about that further for next year.
She agreed. Somebody else is going to see this and. You're going to lose the next year, you might not hit the date.
We got a vote on, yeah, all right. All in favor? Any opposeds? All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Thank you, folks, really appreciate your time, look forward to meeting y'all in person soon.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
All right. Mr. McAdoo from H R S D.
So having you here tonight, um, I've got a presentation to kind of go over what. You receive, who we are, what we do, um, I understand that was in major terms. Uh, it's an manhole issues that are going on through the town. I wasn't prepared to speak on that, and I said I did have some information, um, that I can't pass along. I know we are going back and forth with feet up for a month now, but. Next week, I think it's the thirtieth, um, I know Chris Schwartz from our development group has been working with them. Um, they've tried to talk with some resolutions. Uh, it sounds like there was a flurry coat put on the manholes in town, typically it's a pretty thin coat, a lot thicker than what anybody anticipated. Yeah, these men are now to the point where, you know, some of them are. Over even more, so I do have an inspector sent to the town, um, they've looked through manholes, they've tried to identify which are the worst of the worst. Freezer in that hole in town. Um, the cost for that is going to. More than likely, we also have, the town West Point, they've done some very recently as well, um, just in this town where it's. It's going to be more likely over a thousand dollars now, um.
Correct, for you all.
For, for H S D or for. It'll be for, yeah, it'll be for rate payers, and that's, that's, that's the, and I'm not here to complain about. That is one of the things that we have a meeting next week to really talk about, how do we get ahead of this, so this doesn't happen again. Because it comes down to, we're all rate payers, right? We all serve the same constituents, we need to look out for rate payer money. And having assets covered over by pavement without, you know, the chance of, of work that we got to go out and address it is. So I know my staff have been out here, um, we are making a list to kind of start with the most egregious. But it just looks like the, the way you got to close the road, you're lucky to get about two to three manholes a day done. Um, you try to basically get one of them done and then you go back and you're going to have to go back and repaint everything. So it's, it's not a quick, easy fix, unfortunately. Um, I'm not the expert on this, I've got, again, I've got staff that have worked on this, got a few gears that the Sweden would be out pretty regularly. And we have a meeting next week to really try to rein in, where do we get here, how do we get this done? Um, but with that. It, it's more likely to be outside of C F people, and it's not something that's going to happen. It's going to be a process that has to go to my, my commissioners. West Point hasn't done yet either, that was just a. We, it wasn't every street, but we have several streets and there's, there's water in somewhere that. We actually have manholes we can't find. We're out there with millimeters.
There's no quick way to patch it, like they're not back of that.
No, it's, it's, so the manhole cast, like you've got a casting manhole that sits down.
Yeah.
So that whole casting, you've got basically, you've got to cut the, cut the asphalt and square it around the casting. You've got to go underneath the casting, hopefully it'll get shedded, if not, then you've got to work to do that. You, they, they do make jacket rings to try to wear those at all possible, especially in the roadway, there's, there's been issues with those, but. I've heard in the last few years, they actually have got a bit better. But our, our traditionally, if we were going to rebuild them in house, it would be a brick up structure, you would have basically dig down the structure. Remove the entire actual, like, top of eight inches of the manhole itself, put another portion bricks down, put it back down, order it in place. But temporary pull patch and then come back and have to do a final payment.
The right rate fix?
Yeah.
But not to go by that temporary, like, that's, it gets flopped off their bikes.
Not, not anything that's not going to cover up the manhole and then we can't get to it, if there's blockage or something like that, then I can't get it back to it there completely. So now we have a possibly police will reflect. Yeah, there's, there's no easy, well, easy button on this.
If somebody gets hurt, we can too, you all get through, do we get through?
Typically utility, so if a car is damaged, somebody gets hurt, and typically we have insurance, you know, insurance would cover that. Usually that's more so like, you know, we've had manholes break in the past, to make this one really hard. Brakes, another car goes through it and then you can't take damage to car or vehicle damage or something, so that would typically involve agents, insurance as utility owner. In this particular instance, and I, and I said, I'm, I'm a little out of the loop on. If you had any of that, I know a lot of us.
That was the, again, again, where, where his left was, with Legion Knight was that. H R S D was going to provide the rings and B dot can install. But then we got another set of plans that showed that all of this was going to be done as part of another project from an outside engineering firm.
That's nice move, but.
And so when I saw that, I looked at it with Lee and I said, let's solve our problem, he goes, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, it's like this. Yeah, I know, I know, I physically don't have a C I P or capital project, which is. And that's what we're trying to get to, like, if it's a veteran, if they're going to come and pay. And, you know, they know that, you know, Pierce's dating schedule a year from now and attack this particular area. We can get ahead of it, we can look at it, we try to work with the budget board, put that among the heads, uh, having the budget ready to go. It doesn't make sense to have a brand new road dug up here. And these temporary patches, to go back and do it right, if we meet out once, skirt it. But that's a whole lot of pavement that's going to have to come out, can't be done, now, now you've got. Hopefully the contractor does a great job, but, yeah, you got new pavement on, new pavement. Unfortunately, it's, it's the situation we're in, I, I am definitely following, that's actually already tested a few of us, us staff, and, yeah, we're going to. We're going to make sure we get things done. Thank you.
Are you also here about Mr. Longest issue? A feeling through it.
Now you can go on to.
So, yeah, this is just their review of, um, kind of who we are and then we'll kind of get into that. So, um, so I'm the, I'm the director for Small Communities Division. Um, I, I'm going to kind of go over who we are, where we are, and then, uh, we'll go more into what's here in the town. All right, so we are Eastern Virginia's wastewater treatment utility, so we treat basically over almost three million people now. Uh, we're the fourteenth largest wastewater utility in the, in the country. Um, so we're actually a political subdivision, um, we're kind of quasi state employees, we were formed back in the forties. Back, um, in Portsmouth and a lot of these towns were building up, you know, we had a lot of people moving here for all the. All the ships, shipyard work, all the, all the construction that was going on throughout Antler Road. And there was basically lagoons and wastewater ditches that were going out through neighborhoods into the bay. Um, voices were dying left and right, people were getting picked up. And all the, basically the locality, all the major cities, the Antler Roads got together and so we've got. And that's how H R S D. So combined wastewater, we treat about two hundred and twenty-five million gallons of wastewater a day. So that's eight major treatment plants, um, I'm responsible for the six smaller treatment plants, we've got over a hundred, well, over a hundred stations. Um, so that just, and then we've got kind of our revenue, so we have rate payers, basically. Eastern Shore all the way to King William, Surrey County, all Antler Roads, um, in the middle peninsula here. So our revenues are almost four and sixty-seven million dollars a year, we, uh, we are basically completely self-funded, we don't really get a whole lot of money. We, we put in for grants, all kinds of, uh, you know, low interest loans for, for wastewater projects, but we're pretty much self-funded. Uh, ten year CapEx, but we're spending about almost four billion dollars in the next ten years. Three quarters of that is regular supply, so that's E P A, E Q, those projects that have to be done. Um, a big part of that, it's with, they can see on there, there's two little swift symbols on there. So I don't know if anybody's ever heard of this, this is a pretty neat project, self-sustainable water infrastructure for tomorrow. So what we're actually doing is we're taking, we're taking wastewater, we're treating it, and when you go to one of our plants. You know, you can, you basically, the water that's coming out is clear, you know. Pretty good water, a lot of times it's better water than what's the discharge instrument is on, it's been fluorinated, it's been, you know, gone through all kinds of treatment processes. And it's basically been de-fluorinated and then out the, where we're seeing scrimmages. This, this overall project, we're actually taking that water, running it through an entire new treatment plant. That is basically getting us to drinking water at all standards. And I have drank this water, everybody at H R S D has, we've got bottled liquid everywhere, if you guys ever want some, I'll bring you some. But, uh, it is, it is safe water to drink. Well, Christmas parties, I like to take a bottle and put it in one person's mouth, so that people please. So we, uh, we actually inject that water way down, down deep, deep in the aquifer, so we're a thousand feet, way deeper than even the utility policy. And the idea there is, this area was actually impacted hundreds of millions of years ago, an asteroid. Actually had a crater impact near the southern tip of Eastern Shore, it basically just instantly fried the, um, the, the aquifer underneath us, kind of created a hole. And we get, not a lot of water gets into that, that really deep tomography, it's thousands of feet under. The problem is you got paper mills, you know, we've got one here in West Point, we've got one, I live out in Smithfield. Those paper mills are pumping out hundreds of millions of gallons a day. And if you look from U S G S maps from the nineteen twenties to now, those areas around the paper mill where I live, it's sunk over four feet. So you hear like localized sea level rise, yeah, sea levels rise the same, no matter where you are in the world. Problem is the ground underneath is slowly sinking, you pump out that kind of water over a hundred years, things are going to start to, to, to get lower and lower. Distance flooding gets higher and higher, so those kind of things just keep coming. So this idea is when these two plants are online, and this first one should be online in about two years, we'll be injecting almost forty million gallons a day back into the office. Um, I don't think, I mean, we still jury's out, it's going to completely stop that, and it's definitely going to. So that's a, that's a pretty neat project we're working on, and that, that had huge ramifications, the entire Chesapeake Bay area. Was facing some major, major Clean Water Act, uh, costs about five, ten years ago, especially from the E P A. And by doing the nutrient reduction, doing the SWIFT, this water, all that, even though it's treated. You know, from treatment plants, it still has, it still has nitrogen phosphorus. This basically takes that out entirely, injects in the aquifer, and it frees up a ton of nutrient credits for the entire Chesapeake Bay. So by doing that, that eliminated basically, you know, two billion dollar program, eliminate almost five billion dollars of groundwater breaks. That was huge for this entire state. So here's the service area, so we're kind of the donut, so the Small Communities Division, um, I'm in charge of Surrey County. The entire Eastern Shore, which is most of the assets we have over there are in Acme County and then the middle peninsula, so. A little bit of Gloucester, uh, Matthews, all the Central Mill Sex, King William County, West Pointy, uh, all those, all those areas. That just kind of outlines maybe all again, yeah, you have the green lines there, sorry. Those green lines are all, are, are, they're basically pipelines, um, they're basically the, the green block there, those treatment plants that we have. Um, and those are all small community treatment plants, we get two on these shore, and when we get four up here, and that's what. And we've got quite a bit of pipeline, plus station. Actually, one neat thing we did with that SWIFT program, part of that too, was we're trying to monitor the groundwater, so all three Antler Roads, so actually. I've snuck this word up, I always mess it up, put the emiometer, I believe it is, and we're the extenuating extensiometer, we put one out at West Point. And this thing basically is like a, a pressure gauge that goes three thousand feet deep down the ground. And it sits on a balance and it measures the pressure of the soil that's on the surface. And when we turn our pumps on, we already have a pilot well down in Suffolk, near the Nazm Bridge or, uh, Monterey McBridge. When we turn those pumps on, you can see it. And that's, um, forty, fifty miles away, so it's pretty interesting, but one of the cool things we did when, when U S G S actually wanted to do some boring in this area. And they actually found that there was a canyon in this area way, way, way back when, when Tangio was all one giant continent and the land split up here. There was a canyon here that made the, the Grand Canyon look like a sidewalk. And they found shark's teeth two thousand feet down, and they found all kinds of stuff, we had so many shark's teeth out there when they were drilling down. That we had to be careful where we drove, because people popped. That was pretty neat, they had a tackle box, that means it's a sixteen inch pole that went almost, yeah, thirty-two feet. Yeah, there was just every, every six inches you could see it, it was really, really neat project. Yeah, so we have fifty-six pump stations, a hundred sixty-seven miles of pipeline, with gravity enforcement. Um, another five miles, it's basically currently being built next few months, and six treatment plants, just as well. So what we're responsible with, so basically we have all kinds of responsibilities, we, um, our basically our operators are responsible maintaining those, those treatment plants. Um, doing all the samples that are required, um. While the plant is running effectively and doing routine maintenance, we also have to cover the facility, looking for infrastructure, maintain the pump stations, manage that area. Uh, we have, we can shift operators, every single treatment plant, we get to seven. There shine, holidays, doesn't matter, we have to physically spend time at every single treatment plant. And these are smaller plants that require at least four hours a day, uh, West Point is eight hours a day. And then we also have an on-call rotations, we have staff there twenty-four seven, they carry their friends home, they're home with the service vehicle. Um, we respond to everything from metal backs to force manual brakes, anything. Well, how does the electric system work? Basically, this is just kind of showing, you know, you've got your house, you've got the man, there are manholes, so you've got, you know, a pipe that goes from your house. Carries the waste stream out to usually a, a, a more of a larger pipe that's down the road, and then that pipe will tie into, to manhole stretch. Everything goes downstream, it either gets to a lift station, which pumps it to another pump station. Or if you live in an area where you don't have a treatment plant nearby, sometimes we pump wastewater, we have wastewater lines, Surrey County. They pump to Nazm Treatment Plant, which is thirty-five miles from there. And it has to be repumped all the time, but, yeah, we have several different ways, this area is flat, so unfortunately, the gravity only goes to support. That's where we use lift stations, these kind of machines, to move gross water. So this is just another kind of example here, so typically, um. What happens is you, you'll have a, a private sewer lateral line, if it can clean out, with the homeowner alone, that's well onto their property, usually right outside their house, just outside the foundation. And then the utility H R S D, we would have a lateral clean out near the property line. So right off that right away, every road has a right away typically, especially in town here, where the roads are owned by the, the community, or they're owned by B dot. At that private public interface, H R S D will want to clean out, and if we get a service call that. Got, got issues with plumbing, things are backing up, we start at our lateral, go to our main, make sure that's cleared first. Now, that's the, that's the section of pipe that H R S D is responsible, so we're responsible for the green section. Now, if there's a blockage upstream of that, typically what we do is we'll, we'll try to work with the homeowner. Um, we usually offer, you know, one clean out per resident, but we try to track, sometimes there's a click flush thing that shouldn't be flushed, but. Flushable waves, they're not flushable, please don't use them, they are not flushable, I can promise you, you can flush them, but they don't, they don't separate, yeah, we find. Um, so those things can, can cause blockages, grease, fog, roots, I've seen trees planted. Fifty feet away from that, those roots will find that ladder, and they will get around that plastic pipe and over time they will. So those kinds of things completely. So we try to work with residents, but it's also something that, you know, we can't, we can't support it so much of, so. Typically, anything in orange there is the, the homeowner, the private homeowners responsibility, anything that brings. So this is again, this is kind of how things work, um, you got your public sewer main, you've got basically things go gravity downhill to a pump station and then. Pressurize wastewater pumps to the treatment plant, so let me go to the next line, slide here. So how do we get water, you know, what, what actually comes to us? So in a perfect world, these systems are not, these are not typically in Virginia, especially in this area of Virginia, we don't have combines. We're not supposed to. Um, you know, Richmond, some of the bigger cities out to our west, they've, they've got a lot more. And they actually do combine, they'll have stormwater and wastewater all with the much larger pipes, and they all get together. Um, here in this area, we typically, with the groundwater being so high, the limited elevation we have, we try to keep those two separate. Um, but what happens is, you know, you get major rain events, even high groundwater tables, that water will. Um, but what happens is, you know, you get major rain events, even high groundwater tables, that water will. Uh, it can find a way into defects in manholes, it can find a way in defects from castings themselves, you know, if the casting's under water, it's got holes in it, water's gonna find a way in. Um, a big problem that we've found is uncapped cleanouts, so if your house, your close house has got a cleanout, a lot of times they, you know, over time, they can get pushed down, down to the dirt. I've seen in some communities, especially out of Surrey, we've got some communities that flood pretty terribly. A lot of people go out there and pull the cleanout off because they're tired of walking through water, and they thought, um, that water goes right into the wastewater. Uh, roots can cause conduct issues, they can break the pipe apart between the house and the, and H R S D's pipe, or they can wrap around our pipes as well, and they can cause blockages, they can also put up small crevices for. So inflow, inflow and infiltration is really, really a battle that we deal with, not just here in small communities, but throughout agents. We see flows sometimes double, even triple during rain. And these systems can really only be designed to handle with so much water, so what happens in wastewater is you get, and you've got some biological growth in there, you've got all kinds of things. Um, sometimes there's grit, fog, that's one, greases, um, debris, you have to maintain a certain level of velocity in that pipe. So if it's not moving fast enough, those heavy particles will settle out in the bottom of the pipe, and over time, they build up, and they build up almost like concrete. So you, you put a, you know, a lot of people say, well, just put a big pipe in whenever I have a problem. Problem is, it moves too slow, because of the velocity needed, that stuff sits down there too, too slow for too long, it, it basically forms a blockage in that pipe. And now, you can put a twenty inch pipe in, ten years later, that pipe, I've seen it restricted down to two or three inches. And there's also design criteria from the state, well, this is actually kind of funny, called SCADA, but those, those regulations, they, they tell us what kind of velocities we get. So we work with localities, they, they say, how much flow are you gonna send us? Okay, that's the flow you're sending us, for the picking factor, we'll count the rainwater, and we'll, we'll put in a pipeline that works for dry weather, and will work for most wet weather. So here's Urbana wastewater system. So, I know it's kind of small here, but you can see that WTP, that's the main wastewater treatment plant. Um, so we have a basically an outfall from that plant that, that just into, into the waterway there. And then we have, um, pretty much everything in here in town, except for the campground, goes through our Bonner Street Pump Station. So I don't know if everybody can see that or not, but um, kind of right there in the middle of the page, right out here. So pretty much this is our main pumper, everything pretty much gravity feeds and repumps to Bonner Street. And Bonner Street has a force main that pumps to the wastewater treatment plant, and the best page also has a force main.
Like, you're doing more than minimums.
Oh, sorry. So everything basically comes to Bonner, and then Bonner pumps down to the wastewater.
So the campground goes to Bonner?
So the campground bypasses, but every, everything else goes through Bonner.
Okay.
Yeah. So the campground has their own pump station, and then they have a force main that's that ties in as well. Go to the next slide. So, so every, every collection system, you're gonna have what we call a low rim elevation manhole. So you're gonna have a manhole, typically it's, it's near the pump station, but you're gonna have one manhole that's going to be lower than the rest. And if you have a blockage, if you have a lot of water coming into your system during rain event, that's typically where you're gonna have this spill. So in this particular area, you've got the Bonner Street Pump Station over here, um, you've got Tabor Lane, and this is our Tabor Lane Pump Station. And then at the end of Bonner, there's a manhole over here that is the lowest rim elevation in that collection system. So if there's, the pump station has an issue, if it's overwhelmed with, with flow, that's typically where we're gonna see the water. So we, we identify those in every single collection system we have, it doesn't always come out of there, but that's typically the first place we would go. If we had an alarm that we have a high level condition, we typically start there, and then we'll work around the system and see if there's other issues.
What kind of water's coming out?
So with this particular event, and we can go into the next slide. So here's a March seventeenth rain event, so this is just showing overall radar, basically rainfall estimates for most of southeastern Virginia. So you can see here, the dark red is, is five to six inches, so we got five to six inches of rain this day, um, pretty much from Aporia all the way up to Northern Bay. This is a little zoomed in, so, so we've got estimates around Urbana of four inches, um, we actually have a rain gauge at our, at our Urbana Treatment Plant Pump State, or actually, Urbana Treatment Plant has its own rain gauge. We recorded over seven inches, um, in about fourteen hours. Now, that rain gauge, that data's been flagged, it's, we've had some hit or miss values there, so take that with a grain of salt, but we have looked at other, other available rain gauge data, and it's somewhere in the four to six inches that, that actually occurred in this area. So when we talk about, um, with that amount of rain, so what we look at is, there's actually a table, and it's called a, um, a level, a level of service, or a, uh, a, um, it looks, it's pretty much like how often do you get these types of rain events? So it's based on how much rainfall falls over a set duration of time. So like three inches of rain in an hour is a pretty catastrophic flood, you're gonna have some major issues. Your six inches over two days, it's gonna be a problem, but it may not be the same, the same issue that you've been with. So when we look at rainfall events, we basically use that kind of chart to tell us, you know, how often is this going to reoccur? And we try to design for a minimum of a five-year rainfall event. This, this particular rainfall event, we were more in the ten to fifteen year level service. Is this kind of rainfall over that short a time, um, is typically something that doesn't happen but every ten to fifteen years. So this is kind of showing my system, we've got tell-all information pretty much all through our system, we record flow, um, so this is actually the flow from Bonner Street Pump Station, this is the influence flow, the, in blue here, that's the water actually making it to the treatment plant itself. And then, yeah, here's our rain gauge information. So rainfall started around six P M, but pretty much from ten on, from ten to midnight, we really got. The flows at Bonner Street, they typically average around twenty-five gallons a minute on average, we were well over fifty gallons throughout that time. The treatment plant inflow went from usually around fifty-seven gallons a minute, we were well over eighty to ninety gallons. Um, during this particular event, yeah, we had flows peaking over a hundred gallons. Um, I had staff out there for that particular event, they showed up, the water in the street was so high, it was actually going inside the door of the pump station, and it was flooding our dry well. So we have a wet well on one side of a wall, and then our pumps in the dry well on the other. The water was basically running in the door, going into the dry well, and then the pumps were pumping into the wet well. So, yeah, completely overwhelmed, the entire drainage system in that part of town, that particular night was overwhelmed by the amount of rainfall. So in summary, um, yeah, we are susceptible to increased flows from, from ionized events, infiltration and inflow. Uh, this particular event, yeah, was a minimum of a ten-year rain event, um, and that's again, magnitude over duration calculations. So when we see flows that double with these kind of events, we, we just get completely overwhelmed. Um, if stormwater, if stormwater backs up, that puts more water into our system, so it's something we look into is, you know, is there, is there some ditches, are there some ditches in the area that haven't been maintained, that we need to help beat out on? Um, are there stormwater drains that are, you know, silted up and not moving water effectively? Is any standing water, that water's going to find somewhere to go, if it can't go to the stormwater, it's gonna try to come into collections. Um, cleanout caps that are missing, damaged laterals, uh, smoke testing can be done, things like that, we do, if we do see, you know, periodic issues and, and flows picking up more and more. I've gone back and looked at data for this particular pump station through multiple rain events, this is one of the first overflows as far as what we recorded in our, in our pump station visually observed, um, quite a few years. So this, this, this area typically isn't totally suspect, um, as far as, you know, an area that's, that's worse than any others. But we keep an eye on things, because we do start seeing higher and higher, you know, more and more high-level alarms, overflow alarms. If we see those things, we try to get ahead of it, and that's what we'll do, smoke testing, we'll start looking in the collection system to try to identify, where is the water? Oh, it's not coming from bathrooms, it's not coming from sinks, it, it's coming from the surrounding. Um, so one, one of the projects that we are working on here is, we have a, basically, we call it a SCADA system, but so right now, we have, we do have a lot of telemetry that comes in, we have all kinds of pressure gauges, uh, flow gauges, rainfall gauges. And that gives us information of what's going on at these stations, it also has some basic alarms, high level, pump failed, we do get some alarms that come to our on-call staff. This new SCADA upgrade is, is that tons of out, we can literally, I can log in from my house in Smithfield, and I can turn pumps on and off here and there. So that's something that's being implemented throughout H R S D, um, that works going, starting towards the end of the summer. You really won't see a whole lot, you might see a little antenna pop up on some of these stations, um, usually stick up five, six feet, it's, it's pretty minimal. And actually, some of these stations already have towers on, but they'll be in place with a, with a small vertical antenna. And with that, we'll have complete control of the system, and we'll have much more redundant and, and reliable alarm systems as well. So, you know, right now, everything's cellular based, if the cell system goes down, we can lose alarms. This is pretty much a standalone four G system that we own all the hardware, if rising goes down, we can still, we can still communicate back. Um, so we also do CCTV, so we have closed circuit television, we go through and clean all the pipes. Urbana gets cleaned quite a bit, especially at the Oyster Fest, um, we come out and proactively clean every November, or pretty much every October. We clean every single gravity system here in town, because we know we're gonna expect way above normal flows for that, that particular weekend. So we try to get ahead of it, we pump all the stations down, we remove any grit in the system. We basically clean every single pipe in town, we measure how much grit we do remove in our backers, to see if, you know, if there's an issue going on in the system, and if we do suspect issues, we have a closed circuit television, it's a really small camera on a robot, and you can basically ride around pipes and look for defects and try to find things that are wrong. Um, we do that work, every single pipe in our system gets TV once every five years as a minimum, and then if we suspect something going on, if we start seeing high flows in this system, then we'll do more frequent television, uh, inspections. But, that's kind of, you know, who we are and where we are.
I, I have a couple of questions.
Sir.
One is, after listening to this, are the SCADA system upgrades that you're gonna make going to help prevent what happened at the end of Bonner Street going forward? Or is that gonna have any impact on that, or is it just that we have to, um, tell the people that live on Bonner Street is, you know, what, thirty, ten or fifteen years, that kind of backup is gonna happen, because that's the way the system is, is designed? And, and there's not much we're gonna be able to do about it?
Yes, no, no wastewater systems completely, it's going to, you can never design for, for everything, right? And if, if you design for too large, and that's, that's, you know, we, we try and shoot for five-year level service. The reason we shoot for that is, if you go larger than that, and you end up oversized with pipes, you're not getting the velocity that SCADA requires. So if I build a system for a twenty-year event, fifty-year event, hundred-year event, and I can't meet the velocities that are required by SCADA, EQ won't give me a certificate to operate that system. Okay, they literally will say, no, like, you, you can't design for everything, you've gotta, you've gotta pick a threshold here that, that is going to meet, you know, you meet the velocity, so you don't have issues with accumulation, but you're also meeting the most stormwater that you might. You know, as far as when you have that kind of inflow from these major main events. Um, this particular system, again, we, we don't see overflows very often in that particular system, but it's something that every time we do one, we report at EQ. Um, we basically, we have a whole form that gets done, um, we estimate how much overflow volume there was, uh, it gives the health department as well. They use that information through, you know, public notices for shellfish, for swimming, um, any kind of impact in the environment, all that's documented, and we keep that on record indefinitely. So if we start to notice, like, hey, we went, you know, ten years without a spill at that station, you know, we had two in one year, like, something's going on. Um, the one thing that SCADA will do is it will give us a lot more data than what we're gonna have. So it allows us to get ahead of it, if we do have an issue with a pump, you know, and we, we maybe give lose five gallons of it off pump one, you know, that impeller starts to get worn, it's not efficient, it should be, we're not moving the kind of water it should, that, that information will be available for us to really fine tune and go, you know, what's going on here? Like, why are we starting to see higher levels more frequently, why are we having longer runtime? So there are some maintenance benefits of doing that, now this particular issue, we had a ten, fifteen-year level service or event, those kind of things, you're going to have, you're going to have issues. Um, there's, there's really no magic button for, for eliminating any risk in a wastewater system. Um, but this particular instance, the one thing we do as well is anytime we do have a spill, we also have modeling groups, they model those spills. And they also look at, you know, whether the system acted accordingly to the model. So if something's changed, you know, they look at the, the rainfall, all the data that we have available, they plug it in, I drop, I'll make it say, you know, you have some, the model simulated an overflow, and that's a location, without an iPhone, you can.
I, I do have a, a, another question for you, and that is, um, back in the old days when there was gonna be a, a, a fourth main going here, all the way down to what, Yorktown, I guess, eventually through Matthews. Um, the goal was to get rid of the excess nitrogen and phosphate in Urbana Creek, because it's not really creek, it's an estuary, and sort of a micromodel for the bay, um, and now it doesn't appear that that's gonna happen. And so the question now is, what's gonna happen to Urbana Creek? Are, are there plans to help clean up the nitrogen and phosphate going into Urbana Creek, so that, uh, that'll clean up and become a functional body of water again?
So the pipeline project is not canceled, it's delayed indefinitely.
In, in my life, that's probably canceled.
So what we're looking at doing is, we're, we're, we're doing an overall, we call it a ma- a master plan. Um, we're having issues with our West Point plant, we have huge growth issues in King William, trying to keep up with the amount of flow coming in. In the big scheme of things, these plants are very cost-heavy on H R S D, the amount of revenue we collect. It makes a lot more sense ecologically and financially to try to shut these down. So that pipeline project, you know, our original estimate on that project was thirty-two million dollars, you know, it's gonna build a pipeline about twenty-five miles, that serves about seven hundred customers. We put out the bid, we got one quote, the bid came in at over eighty-four million dollars. Yeah, eighty-four million dollars for seven hundred customers, it's not, it's not something that, that any of our retailers like this is, it's not a good business for H R S D at the time. Now, what we are looking at is, we're actually looking at, right now, studying, and we have a study starting in July, we're going to start in West Point, and look at trying to get West Point across the river to Williamsburg Treatment Plant, and then from West Point, basically make that a central hub, and eventually try to tie in everything you can into that central hub. So, it, that, I don't know for sure if we're ever gonna see a pipeline in the, you know, going to York River. I do believe eventually we'll see a pipeline going to West Point, um, we do have a project right now, because, you know, this, this, this plant was slated to be shut down, you know, next year.
Right.
So we haven't really staffed appropriately, you know, to, to keep running this plant for, for decades, so we're adding staff, I've actually got three new positions, um, right now that we're hiring. We, um, we are, we're, we have another C I P, um, basically just to get that plant to where we can comfortably say, we are gonna meet permit and not have any mechanical or any kind of structural issues at that plant. And that C I P starts in July, that's gonna be a other eight million dollar project. And that's the, that gets through the next ten years, with the other two billion dollars that we have to spend, regulatory money that, that has to be spent. That gets us through, especially the next five years are particularly hard. Once we get out five, ten years, we do have room in the budget to start chomping away at these projects.
Um, what's coming out of that? Is it, is it rainwater or is it?
From, so when we have a spill like that, so that's a good question, so a lot of times, like, if you, if your flow's double, triple, and, and you still haven't spilled, it's a lose, it's very. Um, yeah, I mean, we've had major. And then it's a wrap, I have. So you gotta think, like, middle of the night, typically we see that, we call diaphragm curves, so in the middle of the night, you know, everybody's sleeping. We, we actually have flow in Urbana, when you go to the treatment plant in the middle of the night, you might go thirty, forty minutes and not see a drop of water. Um, these pump stations, they'll hold up water, the, the flow will get hit, the, the pumps will come on, and they'll pump, you know, maybe a thousand, two thousand gallons wastewater into the system. Then there's another flip ball down the bottom of the well, it'll say, okay, I'm done, turn off the pump. Um, so in the middle of the night during dry weather, you can go hours, you know, these, you could basically shut every pump station in town off, probably three, four hours, you would notice.
Sure, there's not enough flow.
Not, yeah, there's just enough flow, everybody's asleep. This, this particular event in the middle of the night, and so you didn't have a whole lot of wastewater coming in regardless. Um, we, we should have been twenty gallons a minute, but we were fifty to seventy gallons. Yeah, three quarters of it's rainfall.
So what you're telling me, it wasn't a whole lot of water?
No, our estimate, based on what we saw, and again, I have to go off of my operators' business, so, so my operators, just be there, they, they estimated twenty-five gallons a minute, um, over a duration of about three hours, and a little less than that for that particular spills, that's in the area. Again, that's fairly diluted wastewater from, from the rain.
So does D Q get involved in that, something like that?
Yeah, so we report everything to D Q. They, they're aware of them. We, we actually have stability penalties, so if, they have what they call force majeure. So if it is a major rain event, you have a flash flood warning, you have, we did it that night, we had flash flood warnings for this area. You have a, a serious hurricane or eastern flash flood, then typically the penalties, you know, they, they, they can, they can still issue them, but typically in those kind of situations, there's not a penalty. But if it's something where it's neglect, like what happened in Richmond, somewhere, their drinking water, she's things like that. If it's something where it's, you know, the operator's not doing what they're supposed to be doing, we do get penalties.
You didn't receive a penalty for this?
Typically, it's a month later, yeah. It's, it's like a quarterly review.
But I mean, for what happened?
Yeah, so this was in March, so we haven't seen, we haven't, as far as I know, I haven't seen, we haven't, we haven't.
Sam, didn't they use a pumping hall? That's like twenty-five thousand dollars a year. I haven't been really involved with trying to get the treatment plant, I mean, not pumping treated goo into Urbana Creek.
Sure, so, sure.
Oh, that was, I think it's alluded, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so they, we have a.
The creek was condemned, shellfish, and we can't have it uncontained until we stop treating, you know, any treated sewage in there.
Well, it's a lot to do with the number of votes on the creek, too. And it's a formula that we use. I don't think, I would love to think that once we get to a creek, it's done, but I don't.
And I, I'm not, I'm not going to pretend, I'm, I'm not an expert on that. We have a tenant services division that does exactly, they work with D Q on, you know, condemnation and things like that. But it comes down to it, it's with D Q. And I've actually got a treatment plant in Nassau Water right now. We haven't stopped for that plant in a year. That we tied to a, a, a pipeline that was built several years ago, the entire treatment plant's offline, and they are still under condemnation. Because there's, there's, even though the plant is offline, the valves are shut, there's still an outfall. So until that outfall comes out of the ground, they don't vote.
And Vantridge had a number of votes, if I recall, when I was doing the, a year ago.
We do have a pump out.
Not totally, but that was.
No, not totally.
We do have a pump out program as well. And I believe they do have interns to come up here and do some pump out here. It's not, that's something that we.
So I have a question. If this is like, sounds like to me like the hydraulic blow off pump station, right? Is there any way you can, is all of you guys are stopped, building a vanage rad runoff, so it's not running through the yard? Yeah, I know at that point it's uncontained sewage, but at least it would go down a ditch and hit this creek instead of running through the vanage yard.
Yeah, so we, we typically after a, a sewage spill like that, we got it split and shred line, remove any solids. You know, we try to resolve it as much as possible. You know, if there's something where, you know, there wasn't a ditch before the event, and now there's full runoff, and, you know, a ditch got carved through from the spill, then absolutely we would, we would get involved and we would show that, that, that man is, it's a good move to use.
I just wanted to set it up so in the future if it happens, and hopefully after long time, it's, it's sort of, that, that would be.
Yeah, your data's good and I understand it. I'm in a very well built, you know, understanding water, and what happens and what goes on. But you said, once and.
Unless you finish, but this is in an open, in a, well.
The data is wrong because I spoke four years ago, and this has spewed over numerous, maybe six or seven times in the last four years. So it's not a one in fifteen occurrence is what's going on. And I, I'm just asking, what are you going to do to stop it? And oh, you can call D Q, it's still, okay, that's fine. What are we going to, to stop it? And as Robbie said, is there a, a way to, to take a, a, a pressure overload and let it go down into the street and into the creek? And you're dumping in the creek all the time? Or are you going to be able to contain, you know, what's going to this manhole?
Yeah, I, I want to do the store ports that I have, and we, we base those on alarms. And we base them on customers. So if a customer calls and say, hey, I'm seeing a spill, and we send somebody out.
Well, I'm going to video it next time.
No, 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 I can, I can follow up. I'll get tech house, and we have an on-call emergency number.
But like Larry said, it's going in, it's going in per country. Great, Ricky, now, that's an issue. Yeah, that, this is in an open, that's how. Thank you, all right.
Yeah, we have, the phone number should be on the doors of pump stations. So if somebody does see a spill, please, the number's right there, call that number. Let us know, we'll have an operator out there in two hours to see what's going on. If it's something that, you know, alarm isn't going off like it should, then we'll get ahead of it. And those kind of alarms, if, if there's issues going on that our alarm system isn't catching, that's going to definitely improve this. As far as building a dedicated pipeline for overflow events, D Q's, we can't build a, you can't, you can't pull a system with, with blow offs. And they used to, a long time ago, they actually, in Norfolk, just still count the storm water interconnects and things like that. Water got too high and go out storm water, all that got shut down back then.
Yeah, that's my question.
It made sense.
Yeah, it's like just a fun question. Are there any other pipes like that, Sam, that could give you trouble?
That's the only, I, I'm, again, I went back, I've, I've been, I've been with small communities now for three years. I went back and looked at, at spill history I had over the last three years.
And that's the low point.
That is the low point for that particular pump station. Now, there, there are other pump stations that do have low points. And there are times, I mean, there, there are times where we get an overflow alarm for like Virginia Avenue's, like, down in the, the low spot of town, and we send staff out there, and the station's too deep underwater.
Yeah.
So I can't verify there was a spill, and honestly, if there was, like, the entire bay was over the pump station. And those kind of events, I mean, we put unknown quantity, because we don't know if it's going out or in.
Well, you're aware of what's going on with that situation, so keep your eye on it.
Absolutely.
Really. All right. Thanks, Sam. All right, Mr. Caster, that's twenty-five twenty-six budget, please.
All righty. Since the beginning of twenty-five, the finance committee and staff and works developed a post fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six budget in town of Urbana. And behind the scenes, I think this is significant. We started the process by reaching out to meeting partners for their request earlier in the process. The format has been altered to better align with financial systems used day to day. And one-time line items have been eliminated, although the record of those is retained. In the packet, you will find the, the complete budget along with a draft of the advertising and a summary of the fiscal impact. Let me review that the general fund revenues and expenses balanced at seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, copper and twenty-two dollars with no tax decrease. The water fund revenues and expenses, that was at three hundred and eighty thousand dollars with in-town by monthly water rate, minimum usage of six thousand gallons of fifty-four dollars seventy-one cents. Over six thousand gallons, five dollars and eighty-four, excuse me, five dollars and eight cents per thousand gallons. And out-of-town by monthly water rate of, of minimum usage, six thousand gallons, eighty-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Over six thousand gallons, eight dollars and forty cents per thousand gallon. These three years reflect any, again, we're trying to close that gap to better position ourselves for grant funding. The taper fund revenues and expenses balances at thirty thousand dollars. This does not reflect the current fund balance which varies with the financial market. Up to this point, marina revenues and expenses balanced at seven thousand, seven, seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. In the self-funding community activities, revenues and expenses balanced at seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Staff seeks authorization to advertise a pu- a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year forty twenty-five twenty-six budget as presented. And I'll be happy to take any questions you might have at this time. Hearing none, I'd like to give some kudos to the budget committee. Nick, um, Marty Hart, obviously Michelle, and council members, the mayor, and council member, the new councilman, Mr. Mr. Wilson and Mr. Chute.
All right. And so the, the tireless work and. I think as a member of council, Mr. Chute will agree with me that Robbie has put his nose to the grindstone and helped with this process, that Roy and Michelle have been tireless on the side to sort of get the systems to dovetail together. But the sample motion on the floor is really to move forward with advertising this going to be not only better for balance, it's not past the budget. And so this sample motion. Amen to your statement on, on Robbie, Michelle, and Roy, and yourself. You've got to break your heart or something.
And you, aren't you in there?
Yeah, but I was always late. So sample motion.
Okay, I move to authorize advertising for public hearing on proposal, the proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six budget. The town of Urbana is presented on Thursday, May twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five at six P M. in Council Chambers, three ninety Virginia Street, sweep in.
Yep. Right on second. All right, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. All right. On task. All right, we do have something, and do you have any announcements? All right, having notes, announcements, we do have a brief thank for closed meeting. If, thank you all for coming. And that'd be personnel matter, so.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
I think, I think you guys.
You're so loyal.
Yeah, motion, yes.
Which is why you're still in open session.